Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty P. M. Happy Flag Day and happy two hundred and forty-seventh birthday to the U. S. Army. It's pretty amazing. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill twenty-five sixty, which requires we make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide the opportunity for the general public to participate to the best of our ability. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be in person in our council members chambers, as well as those citizens that wish to attend in person. However, Counselor Hartman will be on Zoom. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. And because hybrid meetings are challenging, please be patient. Tonight, we will begin with the following presentations. Recognition of the City of Gladstone Fire Department, Clackamas Fire District Number One update, and a presentation on the Butterfly Pollinator Hill Project at the Gladstone Nature Park. This will be followed by the consent agenda, which includes approval of the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting minutes, approval of the April bank balances, budget report for periods ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, approval of the April check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for May two thousand and twenty-two, award of the annual Slurry Seal Projects contract, approval of an intergovernmental agreement referred to as an I. G. A. for design of the eighty-second Drive Pump Station, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement, again, an I. G. A. for Water Environmental Services, referred to as W. S., to maintain the eighty-second Drive Pump Station. And final award of the contract for the Gladstone Fire Department remodel project. Our regular meeting agenda includes item number eleven, which is a public hearing for ordinance one five one five, which is an ordinance approving housing initiatives related to House Bill two thousand and one. Item twelve is a funding proposal for Influent Infiltration, which we refer to as I. N. I. Projects one and two, Policy Direction, Fixing Private Property. And item thirteen, which is Contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, referred to as A. F. S. Me. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Present.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stempel.
Here. Could everyone please stand for the flag salute?
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we are going to start with our presentations. And the first being recognition of the City of Gladstone Fire Department staff.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I would like to reintroduce to you our former Fire Chief Rick Huffman that is going to present some recognition to our Fire Department members.
Thank you, City Administrator and staff, Council, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to, with the help of Fire Chaplain Brian Early, honor the men and women who served with me over the past few years and pay respect to every firefighter that served in Gladstone Fire Department over the decades. Not only have we experienced extreme disasters and emergencies over the past couple of years, but a gradual increase of nine-one calls have happened. Providing a consistent and modern level of service was very challenging. But until we found a solution, the firefighters of Gladstone were up to this challenge. It's hard to describe what this job does to firefighters and their families. So tonight, I want to thank and honor each one of them and their family members for their service, sacrifice, and dedication to the city. As I call each of you up, would you please just line up along here and we'll present some recognition to you? And if you need pictures or anything, feel free to come on up. I'd like to first introduce our full-time captains. Richard Newton. And I'd like to read the inscription on the plaques that each of the members will receive, if I can. "As a firefighter for the City of Gladstone Fire Department, your efforts have directly helped save lives and protect the community. In addition to the global pandemic that began in two thousand and twenty, you survived the historic two thousand and twenty firestorm, the devastating winter storm of two thousand and twenty-one, and the record-breaking heat wave that followed. In honor of your dedication and sacrifice, the Fire Chief, the City of Gladstone, and the citizens of Gladstone, thank you." Captain Kirk Stempel. Now, the title of the next firefighters are paid-on-call firefighters, but I have to recognize the term volunteer that has been used throughout the decades in the city. When I came here, the 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 term was still used. And what I would like to say is, is to me, the term volunteer under the current Fire Department that had paid-on-call firefighters was a term of commitment and sacrifice, not necessarily a financial definition. So I'd like to honor the paid-on-call firefighters, Zach Buchanan. I'm going to mention everybody, and if they're not here, I'll just keep going. John Surda. Connor Denning. Eric Liebner. Jeremy Nelson. Jacob Sale. Barry Schaefer. Charlie Stay. Jared Sternsager. And last but not least, Isaac Thoman. I'd like to formally recognize everybody that's standing here that made the transition to better public safety possible. It's hard to describe the hundreds of hours, if not thousands of hours, that they have worked over the last few years and the conditions that they've worked under. I thank the family members that are here and that are not here, even the little cute baby. And I I can't really say it anymore. You guys made the difference. You made the city safer. Thank you. I'd like to dismiss everyone except Isaac, Richard, and Kirk. And if you want pictures or anything. Part of the tradition, there are many traditions within the fire service and public safety. It looks like we have John Surda coming, so we'll get him in the end. But part of that is, when you've dedicated your life to service for over twenty years, we have a presentation. And I'd like to to recognize our full-time captains and our twenty-year member, Isaac. So first, to me, Richard. The tradition is for an axe that symbolizes the time and effort you've put into it. So, got enough hands? I'll read the inscription for Kirk and Richard. The first and last captains of G. F. D. May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two was the last shift that they pulled. Kirk and Richard are the ones I kind of refer to with the hundreds of continuous hours. People like Isaac and many of the paid-on-call here tonight spent countless hours. But being the full-time supervisors, the only two full-time supervisors, they were here. Yeah, that summarizes it a lot. And and to the family members, again, I thank you. So, and one more, chopping? So this is a unique. We have a special axe to commemorate the longest remaining paid-on-call firefighter. So thanks, Isaac, for everything you've done here. Before we continue, John Surda was able to make it. Thanks. This is actually a good representation of how they served their whole career here and how everybody in the past served here. Because they came when they have other full-time jobs and other times that are impactful in their life, but they still show up. So, John, I appreciate that. This is in recognition. I'll read it again, since John didn't hear the first one. "John Surda, as a firefighter for the City of Gladstone Fire Department, your efforts have directly helped save lives and protect the community. In addition to the global pandemic that began in two thousand and twenty, you served the he survived the historic two thousand and twenty firestorm, the devastating winter storm of twenty-one, and the record-breaking heat wave that followed. In honor of your dedication and sacrifice, myself, the City of Gladstone, and its citizens, thank you." We had a special recognition for Dr. Mark Houston, who's unable to be here tonight. He will be here for the barbecue on Friday. But Dr. Houston is our medical program director. He oversaw the the training, certification, and protocols that we worked under his license as a medical, as emergency medical technician, paramedics, and advanced E. M. Ts and intermediate E. M. Ts. So Dr. Houston was instrumental in helping us get through the pandemic. So we'll have a special recognition for him on Friday. But I also like to recognize our chaplain, Brian Early. No, not every, I guess not everybody has chaplains in their jobs. But this job does kind of weird things to you, and the things you see are are unique and horrific sometimes. Brian is has been by our side for all of it. So I'd like to recognize him with a special plaque, and I'd like to read it to you. "As the Fire Department chaplain, you have been there for every firefighter and every citizen during unimaginable situations. Your ability to listen, advise, and support each of us after a horrific incident, personal loss, or individual struck struggle not only confirms your heavenly abilities, but your genuine desire to help each and every one of us. Not even a global pandemic, statewide firestorm, or devastating weather slowed you down. The firefighters of Gladstone appreciate you, and the City Glad Gladstone honors you." There there's no way to end the respect and honor that we have for the last few years for the firefighters and the history of the Gladstone Fire Department. But this is our formal recognition, and we're going to move forward with increasing public safety, but that's not easy. But we have to honor those behind us, and that is what tonight is about. I'd like to turn it over to the City Administrator for some final thoughts.
Good evening. So last month, the city implemented the Gladstone Pineapple Awards, which signifies wisdom, well-being, and deep appreciation for dedication to the organization. Tonight, we recognize another recipient of this award. A relationship of loyalty and trust between a city administrator and Fire Chief is paramount because the Fire Department is an essential component of a community's ability to mitigate threats to lives and property. For three years as the Fire Chief of Gladstone, Rick Huffman brought substantial value to the city's leadership team and helped identify emerging issues and strategies to improve our organization's success. He is respectful, strong, and mutually supportive. In two thousand and twenty-one, pandemic restrictions were lifted, but emergency responders continued to take extra precautions during E. M. S. responses. Chief Huffman's employees continued to experience long hours and responded to multiple traumatic events this past year. He did an incredible job of being mindful of their mental health and providing the appropriate resources. Thank you for continuing to effectively lead and manage the daily operations of the Fire Department. Sustainability of fire and emergency services is not an isolated problem in Gladstone, and it's not from a failure of past Fire Department leadership, city management, or elected officials. It's due to the change in conditions, the evolution of emergency services around us, increased community standards, the demands on volunteer or part-time firefighters, and the complexity and cost of current emergency services, plus the impacts of the pandemic. Staffing at the Gladstone Fire Department continued to be challenging. Being in a city in an urban metro area demands fast response times and adequate staffing. Maintaining the standard of a three-person fire engine available twenty-four-seven to provide a timely initial response for fires, rescues, or medical emergencies is difficult with a primary part-time workforce. Therefore, negotiations with Clackamas Fire District for a contract to provide fire and emergency services to the City of Gladstone was necessary. We appreciate Chief Huffman for being sensitive to the history, support, and commitment of the Gladstone Fire Department and the community. You remained focused on the need to stabilize fire and emergency services in the City of Gladstone and provided a consistent level of care and response when a citizen called nine-one-one for help. We also want to thank you for your commitment to the Gladstone Emergency Management Support Team and for working with the Police Chief to create a resource center at the Gladstone Senior Center. Your professional expertise in emergency management will be missed. It has been an incredible journey, and you continue to be a trusted leader. We wish you all the best with your new career endeavors. And I would like to present with you the pineapple.
Never hugged my boss. Or his H. R. It's all good.
You're welcome. Well, our next meeting, we're not going to start with something that's getting going to get me all emotional and teared up. So we're going to change that around next time. So are we done with the presentations then?
Yes, Mayor.
We're good. All right. Thank you. The next is Clackamas Fire District One update.
Thank you so much, Mayor and members of the council. What you see before you in the the council packet is the the update for the the two weeks that we've been providing service for Clack for Gladstone Fire. In future updates, what you will see is data attached to it, and that would basically be run volume, calls for service, and anything that was of of major involvement in the city or information around Clackamas Fire. But for the time being, that's that's the the update, just because we don't we didn't have the time to capture any any data for those two weeks. So most of the month was in preparation for June one service. And I'll have Captain Bauer speak to that here shortly. He'll give an update on the preparation of of May coming into June, as well as some station updates and some public relations events that they have attended. May was a big month for for inventory and getting the apparatus ready and and everything accounted for. Transition with C. Com and partner agencies went smooth. Run cards were changed and mutual aid agreements updated. We began services at oh seven thirty, July first, with the first call at oh seven forty-nine. So within nineteen minutes, Engine Engine Three Twenty-two was responding for service to a citizen in need. Just to give a quick layout for the council, A. Shift has three paramedics on shift, twenty-four-seven. Now, obviously, if there's leave, it could be another paramedic that comes in or a basic or an intermediate that comes in. B. Shift has two paramedics assigned to that shift and a basic. And C. Shift has two paramedics and an intermediate. So just to give you a a quick, like, synopsis here, in the first fourteen days, nine of those shifts in in the fourteen had had three paramedics on a shift each one of those days, twenty-four-seven. So it's a pretty dramatic increase in service levels to the citizens of of Gladstone. And I we had an inter-agency meeting with Counselor Garlington and Counselor Alexander, along with City Administrator Betts and myself, and Board President Thomas Joseph and Board Member Jim Searing. That was a very, it was an awesome first inter-agency. I don't know if Counselor Garlington or Counselor Alexander, if you'd like to speak to that piece, or City Administrator Betts. But it it's was a great, great first meeting. And and looking forward to the to the meetings to come. If it's okay with you, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Captain Bauer, and then we'll be here to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, and city staff. I'll just give you a quick update. The first couple of weeks in May, I was reported there. The Clackamas Fire District has one captain to every station. That person's kind of their figurehead. They help with budgeting. They do that type of thing. So I'm newly promoted captain, so junior captain, but they put me at that station. I'm excited about it. I've met a couple of you before, my background and where I come from. I come from City of Kaiser, and Kaiser Fire District is a lot like this this organization this area and organization with regards to pride and volunteerism and community involvement. So that's just real quick about me. But basically, the the first two weeks, I relied heavily on the members you guys recognized tonight. Jacob, Isaac, John, Charlie, Kirk, Richard, everybody, just awesome, really helpful. You guys did a lot with, you guys were able to do a lot with not a lot of resources. And I and it showed us, like, showed me how much I take Clackamas Fire and what we do for granted with regards to how much people we can throw at a problem. But you guys have done a really good job with that. And so just recognizing them, the call volume is actually pretty high. We've expanded some of our borders with regards to our location with regards to M. D. C. and responding on calls where where resources are located. So we've actually been a lot, pretty busy, and able to provide services. So that's great. And then today, we got the chance to, the other thing that we're finding out is that Gladstone has tons of community events, which is awesome. Because that's that's one thing I think that we really could add capacity to with that, with regards to that. So we got to go to the the Center for the Children and Families kindergarten class. So I think we saw a hundred and twenty people, kids today. It was awesome. Two different groups, tons of great questions. Some of them, I thought, well, we can almost put them on the fire engine today. They had, they knew every answer to every question. It was awesome. So we're really looking forward to being involved with the community, continuing that trade, like, great tradition and legacy that the Gladstone firefighters have done so far. We want to continue that, and as a station captain, that's that's one of my main priorities. So we just want to give you a quick, quick, little insight into what's going on. But so far, transition is going great. Your guys' staff is awesome, Robert from I. T., Dan, Ori, Joel. All of those people just really have made a great transition. You guys have a good, good thing going. So I look forward to keep building those relationships, and unless you guys have any questions, that's that's the report for now.
We'll find out. Counselor Hartman, do you have any questions?
I do not. I just want to say thank you for such a great transition and welcome.
Counselor Tracy.
No questions.
Counselor Alexander.
Just want to say, yeah, that in the meeting we had, it was good. We got a a program set up, a structure. We'll be monitoring and checking, and they'll be checking and giving their concerns to us. We'll be giving ours to them pretty much whenever we need to. So it's going to work out good, I think. Thanks.
Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
Counselor Garlington.
I reiterate what Counselor Alexander said. It was a really good meeting. Welcome. I hope everybody feels at home, comfortable where you need to be. And I just invite you all to engage in conversation if need be. And just stay one, stay stay together. You you're a good team. I know you are, and I I just believe in everything that you guys are trying to do forward. So congratulations.
I swung by on the first day to welcome you all there, and I was shocked at the detail of all of the things that I never would have thought about when we're, yeah. Tech, the tech part of it was crazy, so I'm glad that it was seamless, that everything worked out. So again, if you need us for anything, let us know. Thank you very much for making it seamless and easy.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
All right. The next is presentation on the Butterfly Pollinator Hill Project at the Gladstone Nature Park.
It's pretty tough following the firefighters, I think. While she's getting that ready, I want to thank you for having me here. Yep, bye, everybody. Is that how it's going to look, Tammy?
That's it's, yes.
Okay. So this, I'm going to talk tonight about the Butterfly Pollinator Hill, but I wanted to do a little background. We've been up there at the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park. I've been up there for about six years, working on invasives. And we wondered what would happen if we focused on one specific area. So we cooked up this idea to take this one big chunk of a hill and work specifically on that. And Metro came on board with a grant, which enabled us to really get going on it. So that's where we're starting out. So next slide, there you go. It was three years ago. It's supposed to be a two-year grant, but obviously, the pandemic happened. So we're three years out now, and we're completing it. It's the original grant for Metro was eleven thousand, six hundred, and then On Point Credit Union came on board with some extra money for other things. The piece, the hill that we're talking about is ten thousand square feet. So it's like a really big city lot. And it's not square, but we always say square feet because that's how we talk. We've installed fifteen hundred native plants, probably more than that. We've stopped counting them. We keep putting more in all the time. Twelve hundred volunteer hours, and again, that goes up all the time. I was up there yesterday. There are over two hundred and fifty Gladstone students because today we had seventy first and second graders come up to the park to release butterflies. Nineteen yellow jacket nests. That was really fun. And on fifteen community partners, two dump truck loads of soil, one art installation, and a wedding. Next slide, please. So the way it worked was Metro gave us eleven thousand, six hundred dollars, and we had to match that with our own labor and money, one-to-one. So we put in volunteer time. We got other donations. And so that the entire project is, what is that, twenty twenty-three, two hundred? If I can add that in my head. And it was two years long, and then, you know, they knew in the middle that the pandemic was going to mess everything up. So they extended it for an extra year. We were pretty much spent after two and a half years, I'd say. So next slide, please. This these other funding came from On Point Community Credit Union, which has a little grant program for special projects in communities. They initially gave us five hundred dollars, which we used to buy scaled-down tools. These are middle school students trying to figure out how to work a wheelbarrow that was too big for them. So we got smaller wheelbarrows, which came in handy. So we got smaller wheelbarrows, which came in handy as our um aging Fognap people should not be, should not be doing full-size wheelbarrows anyway. And then they also gave us recently another thousand dollars and that helped us bring the first grade up to the butterfly hill. This morning, hun- a hundred and forty kids grew butterflies, seventy of them came to the park to release them. And we got some press. We got K G W and K O I N came out and took pictures. It was on the news tonight. Um and then there was a lot of in-kind donations from friends and neighbors and people that wanted to help out moving along. This is, this is an accurate picture of what it looked like before we got started. It was nothing but brack, dead blackberry brambles. Underneath there, there's some ivy, there's poison oak. And there's um licorice fern, which is all over the park. It's a wonderful plant, but it doesn't attract pollinators. There's not a lot of biodiversity there. Um so what, what we wanted to do was plant things that are, would normally be found. And many of these plants are found in the park, the foxglove, the delphinium. We, we had lists that um experts gave us. But we wanted to make sure that there was enough material there for butterflies and pollinators specifically because our pollinators are in trouble and we want to support them. And we wanted to show other folks how they could do this in their own backyards. Um we picked only Oregon native plants that were locally sourced. I will not buy a plant from Canada or Kentucky. If I find it at Fred Meyer's, not buying it. As I think, I think nursery is the biggest industry in Oregon and if we can't get it here, what are we doing? Um so next slide, please. Our volunteers came from all over. Fognap has a really good stable of about a hundred volunteers from the community. We, we pull community people from outside of Gladstone as well. So it's, it's a broad spectrum of folks. Um the LDS church, which is right across the street, was wonderful. They loaned us their parking lot. They sent people over. The LDS Just Serve volunteers, if you activate them, you're gonna get thirty-five or forty young, strong backs that are gonna do anything you ask them to do. They were just awesome. The neighbors in the Webster Ridge Apartments, which was being built when we first got involved with the nature park, they loved the park. They found it as a resource. It's like their backyard. So we have quite a few of those neighbors now that like to come over and help in the park. Um and then we started out, Cracksburger Middle School came every Friday and worked for an hour. These sixth graders and we found things for them to do. They clipped, they chopped, they pulled weeds, they, they hauled bark dust. They did all kinds of things. And the high school students built a mason bee colony in their um beginning shop class. So they installed that in, in the butterfly hill. So next, next slide. Um so that, a lot of that happened before the pandemic. And so during the pandemic, we were down to our volunteers and we found ways to make the work continue. Excuse me, um because it's eleven acres up there, you can easily socially distance. And people that needed to would put masks on, but it was a nice place to be able to get out and work during the pandemic when everyone was in a shut-in situation. Next slide, please. So after that, this was today. Those are the first graders releasing butterflies into the park. Um and as I said, a hundred and forty John Wetton kids raised butterflies. Some of them, I think they couldn't leave the school, so they did release some in their courtyard at the school. But seventy kids came up today and it was wonderful. Next. So we had a few bumps in the road. We had those nineteen yellow jacket nests. We actually bought a bee suit in order to do battle with the yellow jackets. Um which is pretty funny because we bought it for our largest member. And if the largest member can wear it, then the smallest member can wear it too. Only it looks more puffy on that person. The key to the yellow jackets was the following spring, very early, you put out yellow jacket traps and you get the queens. And we haven't had any problems since. They, they've not, the licorice fern forms kind of a little hidey place where yellow jackets have found it easy to make nests in there. So when we were digging through there, that's why we had so many. But we haven't had any problems since. There is poison oak throughout the park. It's, it's not, not an invasive. It's actually a native plant. So we reluctantly kill it in places where it's gonna interact with our volunteers. There was hardly any soil. This, this hill appears to be the remains of some sort of mine. We don't know when the property was mined, but we found evidence for mining throughout the park. We found a blast mat with lichen and moss growing through it. Um we found there's a hole where they put dynamite down in and there are boulders up there. They're all very consistent size. So um these rocks have been pushed up against this hill. And so there's no soil. So we had to fill in with soil. And McFarland's donated soil for us to fill in those holes where we could actually put plants. The nature park has no water. So what you see there is the guys hauled that up there and installed it and it has a gutter on one side. There's two of these in it. They collect rainwater um that we can use for the plants. Next slide, please. These are some, I think, most of our community partners. That gives you an idea of how many people were involved in this, how many partners were involved in this. So I hope you'll, you'll do business with them. Next slide. This is Dan McFarland dropping off some soil. Those are some of the materials that we brought in or acquired mostly for free. A lot of the fencing material was we would be, my husband and I would be driving and we'd see somebody replacing a fence and we'd stop. And we'd run up and see if they would give us their old fencing, because old fencing is good for mason bee houses. And that's what the high school class used to build those. And it has that nice gray patina on one side. Next slide, please. This is our first, probably not our only art installation. And that's um Jim and Ally Miller. Ally is a welder and she designed and built this for us. Jim, her dad helped her install it. But we collected bottles and she welded this piece together. It's situated on the very top of the hill where a little kid might accidentally throw themselves off into a hole. And we didn't want that. So that's in place as a safety measure. Next slide, please. These are our five pollinators. I hope you'll remember this because there will be a test at the end. We have bees, butterflies, birds, bugs and bats. And there's actually a bat house up there now. Does anyone know what bats pollinate? Any idea? Something you eat every day. They pollinate bananas and tequila. Agave, yeah. Next slide, please. These are actual native plants that are up there blooming right now, today. The list goes on and on and on. Whenever we find a source like the mayor's front yard, we find more native plants to put in. Thank you very much, Tammy. And all of these attract pollinators. Some of them, um like butterflies need a host plant and a nectarine plant. One of them is one that they eat. The other one is where they lay their eggs. So we hope to have enough of those kinds of plants up there that they'll, they'll start doing that and we'll raise our own butterflies. Next. We are actually Monarch Waystation certified. So um that happened last year. We have lots and lots of milkweed up there, which is what monarchs want. The butterflies that were released today look orange, but they're not monarchs. They're painted ladies, which are the most ubiquitous butterfly on the planet. So if you see an orange butterfly in the park, it's probably a painted lady from, from John Wetton Elementary. Next slide, please. These folks live right by the fence and watched us build this thing and wanted to have their wedding there. So this is the Norton's and they got some newspaper coverage for having their pandemic wedding in the park. Theirs, their second and final wedding, they said. So um the reason I wanted to be here tonight was to announce that we are having a party. Um you all should have gotten this invitation. If you didn't, let me know and we'll make sure you get one. There are two events on Saturday, June twenty-fifth in the morning. We're hoping families with children will come up and um use chalk to build a big giant caterpillar along the metro trail. We're gonna have a fun time with that. And then at one o'clock, we're gonna have a dedication ceremony. And that's what we would mostly like you all to come so that we can just say we're, it's final, we're done. Come see our work, see how pretty it is. And we're hoping this will be something that Gladstone's proud of and can, can um feature as one of our local resources. And the last slide is a lot, a lot of the people who helped us. So that's, that's my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for pulling this together. It was, it's an amazing project. It's gonna be a long-term project that we're gonna just interact with and love. And today was amazing. All of those kids were so excited about being there. It was wonderful.
They had a lot, a lot of fun.
Any questions for Nancy?
Thank you for doing what you do, Nancy.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think the only, not a question, but a comment on pollinators. They're people don't realize how important these pollinators are. There's some plants out there that can only be pollinated by one bug or insect or butterfly or moth. Nothing else can pollinate them. If you start losing some of these pollinators, you're gonna start losing plants. An example, that would be the Joshua Tree, Josh Tree National Park. There's one moth that can pollinate the trees. And it's, I believe it's on the endangered species list. If that moth goes away, there will never be another Joshua tree. Certain, certain plants need certain pollinators and it's really important to, to take care of some of these little guys.
Yes, hopefully this leads to more projects just like this. Um all right, staff, are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Just have a quick correction. At the end of your agenda, where it says that your next work session will be at the Gladstone Senior Center, it will actually be here in this building. So we will make that change.
All right, do we have any? So next is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? Sorry, I gotta get organized here. I've got stuff all over. Councillor Hartman, any questions or concerns on the consent agenda?
No.
Councillor Tracy?
No for me.
Councillor Alexander?
I have none, thanks.
Councillor Ripley?
No questions.
Councillor Garland?
None for me, thank you.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion was made by councillor Garland and seconded by councillor Alexander. Any more questions or concerns? I don't see any, Tammy. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Alexander?
Yes.
Councillor Tracy?
All right.
Councillor Hartman? Councillor Garland?
Yes.
Councillor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Do we have any correspondence?
I have nothing.
All right, so before we start, I would like to state that first, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few, few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but we've made a decision that is what's, is based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. They start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter codes and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to take a path that is defensible. So first on our regular agenda is item eleven, public hearing to consider approving ordinance one five one five, approving housing initiatives related to House Bill HB two thousand and one, staff.
Thank you, mayor, city council. A lot of work and time has gone in to bringing this for you tonight. As you recall, about a year ago, we retained M I G as our consultants to take the city of Gladstone through this process. Along with M I G, we have John Southgate Consulting, who is here tonight. We also have our senior planner, Joy Fields from Clackamas County, available. And I believe John is gonna go ahead with M I G and start the presentation first.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is John Phinis. I'm a project manager with M I G consulting team. And uh we've been helping the city of Gladstone with the uh HB two thousand and one zoning code update. Uh so with that, I'd like to share my screen. So just one second to get this up and running. Okay, can everybody see that? Okay. Great. Okay, so we've talked about this a few times over this past year. And so what I wanted to do tonight, there's a lot of information in your packet. Uh so I wanted to make sure there's plenty of time for any questions you have, clarifications, discussion. Uh so the presentation is really just a primer on everything we've done and some highlights uh of what's in your packet tonight. So if you remember, uh we met a little while ago now, but the purpose of this project, why is the city looking at updating its zoning code for middle housing, uh is really a longstanding effort. Uh city of Gladstone uh has been looking at housing in earnest through uh the downtown plan, through the housing needs analysis, through a code audit that took place a few years ago. And so this project really follows in the footsteps of all the work done and the analysis showing the need for more housing and more housing option. Uh right around the same time, twenty twenty, uh the state legislature adopted new rules uh for certain cities to comply uh with allowing middle housing uh in certain zoning districts. Um and then another important piece of this project was involving the community. And I'll talk about how we did that and what we heard from community members. Finally, uh as part of the state rules, new zoning codes to uh adhere to House Bill two thousand and one, uh they must be uh adopted by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So we're uh following right in line with the schedule. So a quick overview of the process. I mentioned we've been at this for a little while, uh started last summer. Uh we've been involving the community, an advisory committee, a technical advisory committee, planning commission, uh and then of course, city council uh through four different phases. And so here we are, the last phase, putting it all together and uh presenting the uh final code amendments. We've involved a series of different efforts to make sure we're hearing from the community. We know that's important. Um and so we started off with forming a needed housing advisory committee. And this was something that the city of Gladstone uh recommended uh back right around the time of the housing needs analysis to say, we really need to uh involve the community in, in looking at the zoning code changes. So we met a variety of times throughout the process. We had a seven-member committee representing a wide range of uh community interests and folks with different backgrounds uh and professions. We had a technical advisory committee, uh really focusing more on the rules, making sure we're, we're following along with state and local rules that include members of Department of Land Conservation Development, D L C D, Clackamas County, of course, Metro and then City of Gladstone staff. Uh we've met with the planning commission as far back as November sixteenth, talk about some of the potential changes coming their way. Uh we have a project webpage, lots of good information. We've been updating that with um deliverables, summaries as we get those. And then as soon as we got closer to uh actually putting together some of the recommendations, we went out to poll the community. We did that through an online webinar, which walked through step by step what exactly these changes are and the need for those different zoning code amendments and then an online community survey to get feedback on some of those proposed changes. Most recently, we've had uh the joint planning commission city council meeting back in March fifteenth to talk about the uh potential changes. And then a series of recent planning commission public hearings, April nineteenth and then uh May seventeenth to talk about the proposed amendments. So these are the chapters in your packet tonight. Uh not all chapters have Uh, not all chapters have a whole lot of amendments. You'll probably notice uh some just have a a few here and there. Uh but essentially, these are the chapters that are uh before you tonight uh for the proposed amendments. So I'll just briefly go through some of those proposed changes. Uh the first is the definition section, and this is critical for House Bill two thousand and one, specifically because the legislation defines what middle housing is and that includes specific housing types. So we updated definitions. Um, House Bill two thousand and one is just one of several pieces of legislation uh that have been coming out. I'm sure you've seen some of these over the last year or so. Um, one here that we highlight, uh House Bill twenty-five eighty-three, updating definition of how we define familial relationships with housing. So we changed that to household. Uh definitions and then difference differences between other housing types with the list here. The specific districts, residential zoning districts, again, uh modernizing, updating the the use of the word uh family, multifamily, single family to household. Uh, we added middle housing as a permitted use, some changes to accessory dwelling units, and then separating out a few different things such as lot sizes for uh middle housing. Uh, multi-household residential district, uh House Bill two thousand and one does not apply to this zoning district in Gladstone. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about what we proposed last time we we spoke with uh what you're seeing tonight. Uh, just a few changes here, but what we ended up doing is adding middle housing as a conditional use within this zoning district instead of a permitted use. Parking amendments, there are very specific uh minimum standards in the state legislation. And the path that the city of Gladstone chose to take was to follow minimum compliance with the rules. And so we had a lot of discussion around this at the joint meeting with the planning commission, with the advisory committee, with the planning commission uh specifically. So uh variety of different changes, but I think the main one is um following the state rules, as I mentioned, to uh reduce the minimum requirement for parking to one space per dwelling unit. Again, that's the minimum. That doesn't preclude anyone from going above and beyond that. Uh, but the state rules are very clear on this specific requirement. Uh, we also added some clarity to the design review standards in table one, you'll see in the packet. And then a few other amendments, um anytime you go into a zoning code to change something, you invariably set off uh a a change in a different chapter. So we uh updated and uh changed some uh specifics to the non-conforming uses section and then mobile home park uh to provide some more uh spec- uh specifics around siding standards. So really quickly, I'll just highlight what we talked about, um just since it was back in March that we met, what we talked about at our joint work session with the planning commission. Uh, we talked quite a bit about ADUs. So uh in the packet tonight, you'll see a few changes around that, both in terms of uh maximum size as well as potential basement conversions for accessory dwelling unit. Uh, as I mentioned, we talked about this at that meeting to remove what we had proposed at that time, which was to permit middle housing in the multifamily zone, multi-household zone. We have uh since removed that and made that as a conditional use. So those would be a conditional use. Uh, and then we talked about also um the potential of allowing on-street parking for credit, for off-street parking, required off-street parking. And uh we heard pretty clearly that that's not um the path that the city wants to take. So we removed on-street parking as an option. Um, and then there's more specifics for potential for cottage cluster development. Okay, and then quickly, just a summary of the two planning commission meetings uh that we've had over the last couple of months. Uh, really just a couple of minor changes here since that joint work session after we made those changes. Uh, one is clarifying uh planned unit development, and I think the note here was um concern around potential large lots uh converting to residential that are currently commercial. So we clarified provisions in seventeen thirty-eight. And then another refinement to accessory dwelling units, in this case, um including a maximum size exemption for basement conversions. And so that brings us up to our our, the last meeting we had, which was on May seventeenth at the planning commission. Uh, after all the changes, the joint work session, the uh meeting on April nineteenth, uh the planning commission recommended unanimous approval with just a a few minor changes that were just uh tinkering with the ADU uh standards. So with that, I just wanna cut straight to uh the recommendations before you tonight. Uh, two recommendations, I just wanted to clarify. The first is adopting the proposed amendments in your packet that you see uh that have been reviewed uh and discussed, especially with a recommendation from the planning commission. Uh, and again, uh making sure that the city is in full compliance uh with recent state legislation around housing, specifically House Bill two thousand and one. Uh, the second, and this is actually related to House Bill two thousand and one, you'll see in your packet, we added uh a discussion around the need to consider findings uh for affordable housing. And this is actually comes directly out of House Bill two thousand and one around the administrative rules. Um, as cities adopt new zoning amendments to comply with House Bill two thousand and one, uh those same rules also require cities to consider uh measures for affordable housing. This is something that City of Gladstone obviously has been doing for quite some time. Uh, but this is something that we recommend, including in any of the findings uh for the approval in tonight's hearing. Uh, and then last but not least, we did receive um some comments from the uh DLCD, who were part of our technical advisory committee. Um, and really, after a lot of discussion with Joy, um with the city, we're recommending future uh code amendments. We feel that the uh packet that you have before you tonight uh would bring the city into full compliance with uh state rules. However, there is, like I mentioned, always some piece of legislation that is is new and late-breaking. And so a couple of things that DLCD pointed out uh to consider for future code work uh are listed here. One is uh some clarifications around manufactured dwellings. Essentially, cities can't require separate, more strict standards for manufactured dwellings as they do for any other dwelling type. And the second is updating conditional uses uh for residential um uses. And this is to comply with another piece of legislation around clear and objective standards. So just a couple of pieces to consider for uh future recommendations. That's it for my presentation. I did wanna turn it over to Joy. We have one more piece of the code amendments related to middle housing that Joy will speak to.
Good evening. As John mentioned, the city must allow middle housing in area zone for low-density residential use. That is the R five and R seven point two zoning districts in Gladstone. But there is something that the city needs to be aware of and an option for the city to consider in addition to House Bill two thousand and one related amendments, and that is sidewalks. Sidewalks are not required to be included in the amendments for House Bill two thousand and one. I wanna put that out front because if you guys need more time to consider sidewalks and potential changes related to that, um because of the June thirtieth deadline for House Bill two thousand and one, you want to make sure that you get those uh required amendments taken care of. However, I wanted to give you a little bit of background on sidewalks and why the planning commission considered sidewalks and included um some amendments in sections seventeen point five zero and and seventeen point um oh, sorry, seventeen point one zero and seventeen point one two related to sidewalks. Currently, sidewalks are required for multifamily dwellings. Um, and a multifamily dwelling is currently defined as three or more units. However, with House Bill two thousand and one requiring triplexes and uh quadplexes to be considered as middle housing, that uh meant that we had to change the definition of multifamily dwelling. And so currently, um sidewalks are required for multifamily dwelling units of three or more units and any development that is part of a land division. So if someone comes in to divide a piece of property into two pieces through a land use approval process, uh sidewalks and road improvement frontage uh or road frontage improvements are one of the conditions that they have to comply with. Um, however, if we leave sidewalks out of the requirement for single-family homes, then um starting July first, twenty twenty-two, sidewalks will only be built with multifamily developments of five or more units and land divisions that require land use approval, including middle housing land divisions. Now, I keep saying land divisions that require um uh land use approval because Gladstone has many subdivisions that predate zoning regulations. And they have many legal lots of record that have historic lot lines that can be resurrected without land use approval. And so there are um situations where one lot becomes two without land use approval because of the historic um subdivisions and historic lot lines that can be resurrected without land use approval. In those circumstances, if you leave sidewalks out of the uh proposed code amendments, sidewalks would not be required for that um resurrection of historic lot lines. Option B, which is what the planning commission recommended you guys consider, is to add sidewalk, curbs and sidewalks as design standards in the single-family or single-household residential um zoning districts. And that would provide curbs, associated drainage and sidewalks within right-of-way or easement for public roads and streets. And um those sidewalks have to comply with the design standards that the Public Works Department has. There is an exception. And that is in the proposed amendments that this construction of curbs and sidewalks only apply to new structures and expedited land divisions where there is um existing sidewalks within two hundred feet or a planned sidewalk network identified in the transportation system plan. There was a concern that if there are not sidewalks um for more than two hundred feet, that it doesn't make sense to build new sidewalks, especially if it's not identified in the transportation system plan as a pedestrian network location. Also, if the um if the topography is prohibitive of buil- developing sidewalks and associated drainage, then it would be detrimental to neighbors to have those sidewalk improvements. And so there is also an exception where the slopes are greater than nine percent. Um, and so those were the exceptions that the planning com- commission considered and recommended. We did talk with the Public Works Department. Um, and they, they felt that referencing the transpor- transportation system plan was adequate, that none of their other uh long-range plans such as the stormwater management plan needed to be addressed in this item. For your reference, the streets with the green lines here on this map of Gladstone are those areas where sidewalks um were identified as priorities in the twenty seventeen transportation um system plan. Other pedestrian access is sh- is shown by other colors such as purple, blue and red. So the planning commission considered sidewalks and uh recommended that the city council approve the draft amendments, including the sidewalks um to comply with the housing-related amendments.
Is that it? John, do you have anything to add?
That is the uh end of the presentation. Yeah, thank you. We'll open up for discussion.
There's a lot of information here. All right, Counselor Hartman, do you have any questions?
I do. Um, Joy, can you, when you talk about sidewalks and you showed us that map, um so option B, you know, to add add curves and sidewalks, are you saying, just to get clarification, just on those highlighted green parts or any I knocked my house down, I'm building a brand-new house, my street is not on that map that you just showed, would I be required to have a sidewalk or build a sidewalk?
If the, if your street is not identified as one of those streets with green and there are no sidewalks within two hundred feet of your house, you would not be required to build sidewalks.
Okay, okay.
Based on the the draft amendments as they currently stand.
Okay. Um, good, no, thank you. Um, can you, just for the folks watching and for the record, can you define what a parking space is for these middle housing, whether it's does off-street or um on-street count or does it have to be a driveway? Like what, can you just kinda go over that really quickly?
Yeah, sure.
John or Joy?
Yes, yeah, of course. Good question. Um, yeah, so the the city's zoning code has a definition uh which is probably not very helpful in se- in the sense that it's uh basically setting a place to park your car. Uh, but more specific to your question, counselor, the um the OAR is the rules for uh House Bill two thousand and one are pretty clear about. Um, it's up to a city to decide if uh on-street parking gives credit for required off-street parking space. So in other words, if you say, you know, we want a minimum of of one um off-street parking space, it's up to the city's discretion to say, we we could count uh an on-street space uh to give credit for that. So in other words, you wouldn't have to have uh an off-street parking space for your required parking. However, based on the discussions we had, um we we heard pretty clearly that the city would prefer to have that requirement uh to be off-streets, not to have the on-street credit. Um, in in regards to where the parking goes, um there are some specifics in the existing uh zoning code that talk about that, what uh the state rules have for middle housing. Uh, garage parking does not count uh for that required parking space.
Interesting. Good to know. I didn't catch that one. Um, thank you for answering that. Uh, you know, I I you said it, um I think we're all concerned with parking and what this might do um to many of our streets in this, in the city. Um, those were the questions I had. Um, I just had a a comment that just kept coming back to me and it's just more for us to think about. You know, like, I agree that middle housing is a key to addressing our lack of affordable housing type. Uh, my comment or concern is that, you know, I hope that we can be mindful of not thinking about just next year and two years, but five, ten, fifteen, about what this impact is gonna have on our infrastructure. Um, our already failing infrastructure and what this increase of housing um might do and that we're, we're thinking really far ahead to set up future, you know, future councils in the city um to set up to succeed. Uh, because who knows what could happen? We could see this hu- huge influx of people just you know, creating all of these new houses and and we can barely keep up with what we have right now. And so it's just more for me putting that, putting that out there for us to think about. But thank you for this presentation. It was a lot to read. I feel like I would have never learned a lot of these things. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Counselor Tracy?
No questions. Thanks, ma'am.
Counselor Alexander?
Um, those are good points. Counselor Hartman brought up also, I think I got a lot of clarification from uh, you know, Mindy's questions and then getting the answers on the email. So, thanks for those two.
All right, Counselor Ripley?
I have no questions.
Counselor Garlington? She's got tabs, lots of tabs.
So, no, I don't have a lot of tabs. I just want some clarification because this is a lot to uh, a a lot to look at. So, w- we are required by the state to go down to one parking space per unit, but we are not required to make that off-street. Am I saying that right? Okay.
That's correct. That's correct.
And we don't have an option to say, no, that's not acceptable to this this town?
As as far as the the minimum is concerned, uh, that is pretty clear in the state rule. So it is, it is the new state rule uh minimum to have that that one uh space per unit in general that we have in the packet.
Okay, I just want to say so that the city understands where I'm coming from. If you've ever driven into some of the really nice older neighborhoods in Portland where they've put up huge apartment complexes with no parking. Those folks who own those homes and have lived there for years and years and years and years cannot park in front of their homes anymore. So everybody get that picture in their brain when they start telling people they don't own cars anymore because that's not the case. So although the state of Oregon makes that claim. Uh, and they and they're driving this parking lessening um to our smaller towns. I'm not willing to jump off that bridge for the state of Oregon because everybody else did. I think it's wrong. I think it's way too much to ask of people who own homes in neighborhoods. Just going to say that. The other thing I want to know is, Joy, you had that map up that um councillor Hartman had uh referenced. Does that sidewalk requirement include safe routes to school? Sidewalks for state state routes to school? Or has anybody taken those two processes? I mean, there's going to be a day that we're going to have to ask the kids to start walking to school again. Who who's got $6.30 a gallon for gas? And if our kids had a safe way to school, then they wouldn't, we wouldn't have that problem. But if we start taking away sidewalks that would enable them to get to school. Or a mom or dad caregiver to take a child to school and they've got a stroller. Or they're trying to push a wheelchair down the road. And that just eliminates all of that. The more sidewalks we eliminate. The more you push us all in a car. So where is that coming from? Where 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 is the, where's the happy medium? There is no happy medium. You want us to walk? The state of Oregon wants us to walk. They don't want us to be healthy, but then they're going to take our sidewalks away. So, you know, I have a really hard time with a lot of this stuff and it's not just because I can't get my head out of 1985. It's because I feel like we bought homes in a neighborhood and we invest in a neighborhood that we want to be safe for our children. And to take sidewalks away too, doesn't cut it for me. So there's that. I forgot to say from the beginning of this really quick that my husband and I had talked about putting an ADU in the backyard. So we haven't done it, haven't gotten any further than that discussion, but just full disclosure.
Yeah, and Counselor Garlington, I want to address the sidewalk issue because we're proposing this as an opportunity to have sidewalks sidewalks built, not take away. So I'm going to have Joy clarify that for you.
Okay.
Correct. Thank you, uh, Jackie, because this is not proposing to take away any sidewalks.
Okay, so what about that whole one side or the other on a new development? Because that's what they did up off of uh Glen Echo and it's not attractive. All all there, if if a child lives on one side of that road, they have to cross a street in order to be on a safe sidewalk to get to school. And that's not hardly a stone's throw from the high school. What were we thinking?
So usually sidewalks are only required on the property that is involved in a subdivision or a development process. We can't require it on neighbors' property um because it would not be in line with the impact of the development potentially. Um, so if there's a a subdivision on one side of Glen Echo, they may not have to provide sidewalks on the other side because that's not the property that they're developing.
No, they developed on both sides of the road and were able to not put sidewalks on one side.
Then I'm not aware of that development and
So I'd like to close that loophole.
Right.
Um, in that. And uh, I'm just going to remind everybody because that's part of my job, I feel like. That we had a large building put up on Webster Road called Webster Ridge. And I complained and I complained and I complained and I said, there's not enough parking up there. There's not enough parking. And not five years later, that gentleman came back to us and said, well, we don't have enough parking. So now they've taken a big lot that could have been ho- homes. And they've had to create more parking and more garages to accommodate their residents because they've had people move out because they didn't have enough parking. Again, it's a problem. So I'm just, that that's what I'm going to say. And this was a lot, a lot to go over. Um, I'm not going to lie. Do I have it all clear in my head? Probably not. But I'm going to um trust that those that do guide us in the way that we are supposed to be guided and hope that we make the right decision. Thank you.
Okay, first question or clarification is on the parking, off-street parking. The state says it could be on-street, but as a city, we can require it to be off-street. Is that correct? Yes, so we can require it to be truly off-street.
But we can't ask for 1.5 anymore. We can only ask for one.
Yep, we can only ask for one. So question that I have, and I couldn't find it in here, and I know that we've talked about it before, is protection of our historic properties. How does House Bill 2001 address historic districts or historic properties? Because I would hate to see developers come in and buy our older historic homes that are inexpensive and raise them and start putting in high density. What do we have to do to protect our historic homes?
Yeah, uh, great question. There is actually a provision in Division 46, which is the rules that we're mostly relying on. All of the rules we're relying on for the the housing code amendments. Um, and it does go through a lot of the statewide planning goals uh that City of Gladstone has for the comprehensive plan. And then one of those is Goal Five, which is historic resources. So essentially, like a lot of the other provisions, I'll just kind of do the the short version. Like a lot of the other provisions in the state rules. Um, so long as the city is applying the same types of rules uh to single-family uh, single-household detached dwellings as they are to any other housing type, the middle housing type. That's, that's what the rules would allow. So in other words, if um we're protecting uh historic duplex, for example. We would just have to make sure the city is applying those same rules to a a single-family household.
Hmm, because the rules are higher density. So does that mean basically that we can't save those homes? That if we have to apply the same rules, we're stuck with applying the House Bill 2001 rules? Which don't say you can create a historic district and protect all of those from higher density development.
I I think in general, it is saying, if you were to, let's say you were to hypothetically create a historic district of some kind. Um, it's not prohibiting the city from doing that. It's just saying essentially that the rules would have to apply equally to you know, single-family housing as it would to uh, you know, multi-family or attached housing types.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are the only questions that I had. So what we need clarification on is sidewalks. Do we want to go with option A, which is to not require them?
Vanessa has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to get clarification following up on Counselor Garlington's apartment comment. Um, we're, it's just middle housing, right? So like cottage clusters is as large as we can go. Is that my understanding or? Apartment complexes are not a part of middle housing. Am I, am I understanding that correctly or am I not?
That's correct. We are not talking about multi-household. That includes apartments and that includes changes to parking for multi-household apartments. We're not, we're not touching those requirements. This is just
Okay, so what we're rezoning in terms of middle housing, we're not rezoning, allowing large developers to come in and build high-rise condos or like, you know, like up on Webster Road. That that wouldn't happen down where we're rezoning, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. And we we did have, we had some great slides in the presentation that I didn't think we we wanted to add just because we were um, had a lot of introductory slides um when we first started, but that's, that's exactly right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, no, I I love the the pictures of that, but I just wanted to make sure that I think everyone's clear that this doesn't include those. You know, 50, 80 unit buildings, but it's, I think it was what, five or six maybe in the cottage clusters or something, but thank you. That was it.
And Counselor, I did want to clarify, I misspoke earlier when you asked about how do we define parking. Um, I was pulling, the the parking standards are a little different for the different housing types. When I mentioned garages don't count, I was actually incorrect. Um, for a cottage cluster development, that's where I was getting this from. A large city, which is in this case, uh, City of Gladstone. May not require off-street parking to be provided as a garage for carport. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from staff?
Any?
Oh, Counselor Ripley.
Uh, one, one comment on sidewalks. Every house, every street should have sidewalks on both sides. The problem with in Gladstone is there's, especially on this side of oat field and all the front yards and driveways and garage doors in the same elevation as the street. So if you put a sidewalk, if you require somebody to put a sidewalk in front of their house and it rains, it's going to flood their garage or house. Those need to be taken care of when we redo the streets and when we drop the streets down to the right grade. But you can't go and put them in right now and require it now, or you're going to be flooding everybody out and building swimming pools in front yards.
Yeah, there's a couple spots where that's happening already.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? It's a public hearing, so do we have anybody signed up to comment on this one?
We do have one, uh, and that is Kristen Bowen. Kristen, it appears you're still muted.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Um, as a longtime resident and participant in the city's committee with this matter, I understand the importance and need for middle and affordable housing. Though I ask that the city council be mindful of the impacts to our city and the livability of our community. Our infrastructure is incapable of handling this growth. Mentions of reductions of SDCs to bring this to fruition is concerning. The methodology behind SDCs is to provide for the future. Future growth takes money and having everyone pay their fair share. Reductions in SDCs will not follow our own methodology and it will not re- uh, not provide uh adequate funding for infrastructure facilities of the future. I ask that we be cautious in moving this forward too quickly. I understand that we are under a timeline. Please make sure that you, as our counselors and our representatives, make sure that you have done your due diligence as we cannot undo this. Our livability in our community matters not only as residents and homeowners. But just as community members. The impacts to this are real. And I hope you understand that in moving this forward too quickly. The consequences are staggering. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristen. I think a lot of people feel the same way that you do. The unfortunate part is that this is coming down to us from the state, so our hands are tied, but we can do whatever. Where, or whatever's possible to um tweak this so that it fits our vision of our city. So we need to make a determination on whether for sidewalks and whether we want option A or option B. Is that correct? Option A being sidewalks only in multi-unit developments. And option B is sidewalks in all new developments. Is that correct?
Yes, to be clear, you don't have to incorporate the sidewalk amendments into this package tonight. But this is an opportunity to get more sidewalks.
Yeah.
And that is why the timing to do this is why staff in the planning commission recommended option B. To do that. I also want to make um a disclaimer that there are safeguards in place regarding infrastructure that if a developer wants to build a duplex or triplex. The public works department has the authority to review to determine whether our infrastructure will support it or not. And we can deny a permit based on our infrastructure.
Can I ask a question on that? So um, let me just clarify this. Uh, with you and Mr. Cannabroli. Somebody was going to come in and a a house burnt down in the middle of a block. And it was a block that you've already identified that has a failing structure. You could deny it based on the fact that that is, that area is doing all it can to support what we have now and to add more would not be acceptable. Is that what I'm hearing?
Um, it depends on what what you're putting back in there. If you're putting the exact same thing, you're not adding capacity. So nothing would change if you're talking of adding a duplex, fiveplex or something like that, that would obviously uh add capacity to the system. So it's kind of, it depends on what you're putting back in there.
Okay, but because I have seen where they've taken down a lot of, or you know, fires happened and rather than putting down, putting back a single-family home. They've put in a lot of duplexes in areas. So I guess what um, um Kristen Bowen spoke on basically just this type of thing and to reassure her that nothing would go in that the a a city block couldn't handle at the time. So you could deny either A, deny it, or B, ask them to wait because
The developer could offer to put it in for the city.
They did that at Webster Ridge. They oversized the sewer pipe down to oat field, I believe.
So there there are options. We just want to make sure you understand there are safeguards that 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 means that we have to consider our infrastructure before these buildings are built.
Good, okay.
I know we tried to, we, while we started talking about a potential moratorium when the Webster Ridge apartments came before us. Because our infrastructure absolutely could not support it at the time. And doing a moratorium is next to impossible. So we have to work within the parameters that we have and have them upgrade the infrastructure if that's at all possible. Okay, so as far as the sidewalks go, since we're here, and I I think that we might as well go ahead and and decide if we want to incorporate option A or or option B. Can we just do a roll call vote, Jackie? Do you think that would be fine?
That would be fine.
Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please, for us to choose either option A, which is sidewalks only in multi-unit developments, or option B, which would be sidewalks in all developments?
Okay, so we're looking for option A or option B response.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Option B.
I'm sorry.
Option B.
Thank you. Counselor Hartman.
Option B.
Counselor Garlington.
Option B.
Counselor Ripley.
A.
Counselor Alexander.
I'm B also.
Mayor Stimple.
Option B. All right, so we will um go ahead and just assume that that that's incorporated into what our final vote will be. All right, any more questions or concerns? No, would somebody like to make a motion? Which page is the motion on? Is it on?
We need to read the full ordinance title on 11 dash five.
11 dash five. Okay, so whoever makes a motion, please read that full title there on the top. Somebody want to make a motion? Well, if nobody else is going to do it, I suppose I could do it, but I'd rather.
I can make a motion.
Okay, please.
I am going to make a motion that we pass ordinance 1515. An ordinance amending the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map and Residential Use Designations. Gladstone Municipal Code Title 17 Zoning and Development. And amending the zoning map for the purpose of addressing middle housing to comply with House Bill HB 2001 File TXT dash 2022 dash 01.
Incorporating option B with for sidewalks.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Counselor Garlington and seconded by Counselor Hartman. Any further questions or discussion? No, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. So since this was unanimous, we do, you still want us to do a second reading? All right, so because this is an ordinance, we need to do a second reading. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept to pass ordinance one, five, one, five and read that title again? No, you can do it again.
I will do it again. I guess you're
You did such a good job.
Hear from me one more time. I make a motion to pass ordinance, the second reading of ordinance one, five, one, five, and ordinance amending the Gladstone Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map and Residential Use Designations, Gladstone Municipal Code Title Seventeen Zoning and Development, and amending the zoning map for the purpose of addressing middle housing to comply with House Bill HB two thousand and one file TXT dash two zero two two dash zero one.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, thank you again. All right, motion was made by Counselor Garlington, seconded by Counselor Hartman, our second reading for ordinance one, five, one, five. Any further discussion or questions? No, could you do a roll call vote again, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, ordinance one, five, one, five has passed. Thank you for all of the work. Yes. It's a lot of work and you have to be really passionate about this stuff. So thank you very much for being passionate about it. The Planning Commission, yes, all the people that worked on it. Yes, thank you. Hopefully, hopefully, there won't be another huge lift like this, but this, this is what we need to move forward. Thank you very much. Next is item twelve, consider allocating American Rescue Plan Act funds referred to as ARPA towards completing projects one and two in the recently completed inflow and infiltration referred to as the INI Source Identification and Rehabilitate Rehabilitation Report. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This project, we're very excited to bring to you. As you recall, fixing our infrastructure is a city council goal. Back in September, we had a work session with the city council to talk about how we feel we should allocate our American Rescue Plan Act funds. And at that work session, we said we should put one point two million dollars towards our infrastructure, but at the time, we didn't have a specific project. So at your July work session, we are going to have a topic just on America Rescue Funds to update you on where our two point seven million dollars is being allocated. Tonight, we're talking about one point two million dollars, and we're going to talk specifically about which project that will be, and I'll hand it over to our Public Works Director to walk you through that.
Thank you, Jackie. As you know, the City of Gladstone has a longstanding history of DEQ violations pertaining to raw sewage overflowing into the Clackamas River. In the spring of twenty nineteen, city council authorized staff to enter into a mutual agreement and order with the state of Oregon to settle DEQ violations. The city has worked diligently to meet obligations with DEQ meeting the first meeting the four prior requirement deadlines. The fifth deadline is July of twenty twenty-three, which is to complete a final schedule and annual budget for addressing the issues identified by the inflow and infiltration study. Staff acknowledges that one of the impediments to meeting the next deadline is addressing two hundred and thirty-nine sources of INI that have been identified citywide. The City of Gladstone received American Rescue Fan Plan Act funds to and staff recommends dedicating one point two million dollars toward infrastructure improvements, utilizing these funds toward the INI Reduction Plan will allow the city to repair sources of INI for both public and private infrastructure and ultimately bring the City of Gladstone into compliance with DEQ. Overall cost of the INI project phases one and two will be two point two million dollars. The city entered into an agreement with West that provides thirty-three percent reimbursement on INI reduction projects. The city would receive up to seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars as part of this IGA. The use of American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of one point two million dollars leaves the remaining balance of approximately two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, which will be funded out of the sanitary sewer and stormwater funds. Option one is to allocate one point two million dollars in American Rescue Act Plan Funding toward comp completing projects one and two in the recently adopted INI Source Identification and Rehabilitation Plan. Option two is not to allocate the one point two million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act Funding towards completing projects one and two in the recently adopted INI Source Identification Rehabilitation Plan and impose Gladstone Municipal Code thirteen dot twelve dot one hundred.
All right, so what you need from us is to choose option one or option two.
That is correct, and why we're recommending option one is because this is an excellent opportunity to take taxpayers' money and reinvest it into the community. We not only have public infrastructure that needs fixed, we have private infrastructure that needs fixed, and we're saying, let's take this one point two million dollars and allow those two hundred and thirty-nine areas to be fixed with that money. That way, we don't have to impose our code and make the private property owner pay for that.
Yeah.
So all we're looking for is guidance to move forward. This this engineering is already in place. We just want to use ARPA funds towards funding part of the project.
All right, I'm Counselor Hartman. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Tracy.
No questions.
Counselor Alexander.
Just so I'm clear, this is this is when we did that smoke test, when the smoke was coming up around, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and then and then we we put in that ARPA money, that's going to help some of our citizens alleviate some of their costs.
Yes, it will fix private and public.
No brainer. Thanks.
Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
Counselor Garlington.
I'd just like to say that for anybody that doesn't know, there's a lot of man-hours that went into this before we even got this piece of paper. So I'd like to thank you both for making all of that happen because I I the help that it's going to give many private citizens and businesses is immeasurable when, you know, money is such a hard thing to come by some for some right now. So thank you for doing all of this and thinking ahead of the game.
I don't have any questions. We've been talking about this stuff for for a long time. So um a motion, do you want to have a motion made for option one? Or does somebody want to make a motion to go with option two?
Well, if I make the motion, do I just make a motion that we allocate one point two million in American Rescue Plan Act funding towards completing projects one and two in the recently adopted INI Source Identification and Rehabilitation Project?
Perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Garlington to go with option one to allocate the one point two million dollars in ARPA funds. Any questions or concerns? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley.
Option one.
Option one, correct. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy. Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, the funds are allocated. Now the fun, the work begins. All right, item number thirteen is to consider approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five Collective Bargaining Agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, referred to as AFSPME. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Staff has kept you appraised in executive sessions of the current collective bargaining negotiations for the years twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. Tonight, we have our city's negotiation team, which is Nancy McDonald, our Human Resources Consultant, and Darren Caniparoli, the Public Works Director, who were part of that team. I will ask Nancy to go over the staff report for you to consider approving the collective bargaining agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Item thirteen that you have in front of you is seeking approval of the local three fifty dash zero three AFSPME, which is the American Federation State County Municipal Employees Union and the City of Gladstone Collective Bargaining Agreement. We began negotiations back in January, met in February, and again in May, and there have been several executive sessions held on the information contained in this agreement. This is a three-year proposed agreement, which would go into effect on July first and run through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. There is a redline copy of the agreement attached, which I'm hoping that you've had a chance to review. It covers most of the topics that we discussed in executive assess session. The AFSPME unit met about two weeks ago, presented it to the members, and it was ratified. So now the only action that needs to be taken is either A, your approval to negotiate to have Jackie authorize the agreement so that it can be implemented July first, or the second option would be to direct staff to reopen negotiations. And I will entertain any questions that have not been previously answered or that you'd like to be reminded of tonight.
All right, Counselor Hartman, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
No questions, thanks.
Counselor Alexander.
No, I just wanted to understand for for anybody on active duty, they get fifteen days off with pay? Is that with pay there they get if they're called called to duty? Right here in A, under section five militarily.
Yes, we will comply with the current regulations under you, Sarah.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
Counselor Garlington.
No questions.
And I also do not have any questions, so I would entertain a motion to direct staff to execute a final copy of the agreement with AFSPME.
I made that motion.
So moved.
All right, Counselor Garlington made the motion and Counselor Alexander seconded it. Do we have any other questions or concerns? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Hi.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes. Thank you very much. All right, so do we have any business carried forward?
I have nothing.
All right, do we have any business from the audience?
We have no one that signed up to speak, though.
All right, so business from the council. We'll start with Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to take a moment to call out and thank Sergeant Leake and an interaction that he listed on his monthly report. It's on page six dash twenty-four. It happened on May fifth, and you can read more in detail. But I just wanted to express my gratitude for being able to shift gears and work with someone who is autistic. You know, for me, in in a time of great distrust in our police force in general, to be able to handle situations like this, you know, I just want to say that I'm proud that Gladstone knows how to treat humans with patience and respect, and I'm very grateful to have read that interaction. An update for the childcare for all task force that I'm involved in. We have finally reached our community engagement stage, so I will be receiving a form from their communications workforce group that I would love to share with you all, to share with your communities. It is for anyone who lives in Clackamas County, and basically, it's just to share their thoughts on childcare. Their, you know, how their interactions with it, whether you're a caregiver, a parent, a grandparent guardian, a business owner, elected officials who have to rezone for these sort of things, any sort of feedback as to why having affordable childcare or childcare for all is important to you or to anyone in your network of people. We will have multiple language of translation available for that as well. And again, this is put on by Clackamas Workforce Group and in partnership with the county. And then just lastly, you know, as an ally to the LGBTQI community and the Black community, I just want to recognize the resilience and determination of both our LGBTQI and Black residents and businesses who just continue to fight to live freely and authentically. Happy Pride Month, happy Juneteenth. For those interested, the county, along with the Community College and the County Equity Coalition, are partnering to celebrate Juneteenth and Pride Month this Friday, June seventeenth, from five thirty to seven thirty at the college camp. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
Nothing for me.
All right, Counselor Alexander.
Just thank everyone and anyone who worked on this big, huge, large packet.
Counselor Ripley.
No questions.
All right, Counselor Garlington.
I would just like to reiterate the fact that our fire department, I believe, is in good hands at this point. We were in good hands, and the collaboration between the two is working well. I really feel that. And I I want the citizens of Gladstone to know that they are still in good hands, and there's just no doubt in my mind about that. Reiterate Nancy's invitation up to the nature park. There's a lot of man-hours that have happened in those man-hours. Many, many, many of those happen to be Gladstone residents and I I'm honored to call them friends and work partners, and I have loved getting to know the kids up there from the high school and the kids that we've hired to help us with that project, and it is a labor of love, and for anyone that wants to come and see it, we are happy to show you around our little flower pot. The Clackamas County Library Board Meeting was canceled last month, but we all had heard through the grapevine, of course, that the builds for the Clackamas County Library projects is on hold, and we are not dropping that. Our city administrator, Jackie Betts, has been a cheerleader for that project, and I'm sure will keep this city updated on everything that we find out in the near future, hopefully, on what's going on with that build. And I did read in the in a couple of places, not just Google, that timber prices are going down, so that could be a really, a really good thing that would happen for us. I want to invite everyone to find a group and volunteer. It does wonders for every part of your being. Who you find to volunteer with is all up to you, but I do highly recommend it. And I would also like to say congratulations to Counselor Hartman on receiving the Democratic nomination on House on the seat on seat forty. She worked really hard to get that going, and she's got a long road ahead of her. Good luck. And our best wishes.
All right, I'm last, as usual. I'll mention that the food pantry is open from three to five, actually, for the summer, we're open three to six on Thursdays at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church off Glen Echo. We now have a a road sign that tells you that you're on Glen Echo, so hopefully people don't get lost and come to us, which is in the portables behind the church. The number of families and homebound seniors is increasing every week, and we're seeing that inflation is affecting more and more people, and also the unlimited amount of food that we're getting, we're starting to see that as well. So we would love to see volunteers come by. We would love to see donations. We're there Wednesdays from two to three thirty, two to four, so we can be there to get donations, and if anybody needs to drop stuff off on at other times, just let us know and we'll make that happen. We need volunteers, just as everybody else does, and it really feeds your soul. So I, as Counselor Garlington said, recommend, highly recommend volunteering. Get out there and help people. Parks and Rec Board met last night and discussed the Robin Hood Park Survey. They compiled a list of projects that are a priority for the neighborhood, which was so awesome that they actually reached out to the people that are using the parks and asked them what they wanted. Public Works is going to be contacting a vendor for play equipment and develop a plan to integrate some new items into the existing layout, and it will include a picnic table, a bench, as well as refinishing the basketball court. They're going to start working on their biennial work plan to be presented to council before the end of the year. I want to thank the volunteers that sit on that board. They are so dedicated, passionate, and they are true visionaries. They take the parks to heart, they own them, and they want to make and they want to make it the best that they can for our city. We have exactly the right people on that board to be our advisors. I would also like to thank the members of FOGNAP, which is Friends at the Gladstone Nature Park. I don't think enough people realize just how amazing that group of people are. They adopted what was essentially a debris dumping ground, an area that very few frequented and very few people even knew existed. They took this diamond in the rough and they made it shine, and it is every improvement, and I really do mean every improvement, is because of their blood, sweat, and tears, and usually their money as well. The group is an example of stewardship and community involvement. I hope that others will step up and adopt some of our other parks that tend to fall through the cracks and make a difference in our incredible outdoor spaces. So that's all I had. Our next meeting, June 28th at 5:30, will be our city council work session at City Hall. July 12th at 6:30 will be our next regular city council meeting, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Garlington to adjourn. Any questions, concerns? Nothing? Could you do a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, motion was passed, and we are adjourned at 8:21 PM. Thank you very much.